Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioner Deb Shore. On my right, fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office, Jen Holloway. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren from the County Board Office. We have our Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer, Anne Ames. Commissioner Bill Avery should be joining us momentarily. He's running a few minutes late. Now, if you would, please stand and join me for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
Copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, April 10, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Abstain.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four, yes, one extension. Number two of claims, approve of all claims processed through April 17, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is new business. Three A is setting the salary for Anna Marks, Deputy County Attorney, in amount of $65,000, $642.72 as Attorney One effective April 23, 2018.
Good morning, members of the Commissions. Excuse me. Pat Connaughton with the County Attorney's Office. We are asking, we're gonna, Anna Marks is gonna be coming to our office hopefully here in a week. We are asking that the salary be set at 65,642.72. That is step two, and the reason for the increase from the step one is Ms. Marks, excuse me, does have three years' experience with Youngs Williams, which is the law firm that handled the child support work for Douglas County. So she's gonna be coming here to our county. We're gonna have her in the Child Support Division, and so we wanted to get her started at a little bit higher salary. We will then be moving some of the other attorneys around to fill in for moves that have been made already in our office. So I would ask that you approve the salary effective April 23 at that step two.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, setting the salary for Anna Marks. Any discussion? Please hold the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a mini grant contract application and award with Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office in amount of $10,780 for selective overtime enforcement by the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office related to the clicket or ticket mobilization.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is an ICS deposit placement agreement with Exchange Bank for insured cash sweep options.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Exchange Bank. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a CDARS deposit placement agreement with Exchange Bank for insured cash sweep options.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award or approve the second agreement with the Exchange Bank. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Three E is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and Youth Services Center to award a contract for medical services at the Youth Services Center to Correct Care Solutions. The estimated amount of the contract over the four-year term is $1,091,219.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Bob Walla, purchasing agent. First of all, I want to, there is a change to the total cost of this. We received an updated pricing sheet from the company. They reduced the travel expense after it was challenged, and so the new estimated total is $1,055,549. And we will get a copy of that for you to put in the record here after the meeting.
Michelle Schindler, Youth Services Center. This contract does include a $42,000 increase. Approximately $6,300 is projected to be for the 3% CPI. Most likely, that will be a bit lower. Bubs determine that some of the CPI increasing will only apply to some parts of the contract or services, not all.
Correct. That's something that we're continuing to work on.
$7,000 was moved from other line items that we had into this contract. So in other line items, that would be pharmaceutical supplies and waste. Those will be going down in our line item general fund request and moved to this contract. And approximately $28,000 of the increase goes to other areas, which include policy and procedure, insurance, admin, management fees, and staff salaries. We did ask more specifically for it to be outlined that we get coverage on holidays and vacations. That was one thing we were really adamant about with this new contract. So we're requesting your approval of us entering into an agreement with this firm for medical services at the Youth Services Center. There is an amendment in the contract that will be putting into decrease staffing or increase staffing in the event of number changes. So we went with our lower ADP to begin with.
Also, I want to point out that we did issue an RFP for this, and we did have another company that responded to it, and we made it all the way to negotiations. And once we got into negotiations, we got an email the next day saying that they were withdrawing their proposal. So our next option was going with CCS, who is also the provider for the adult facility.
The company that withdrew is a smaller medical care company that works with smaller jails throughout our state, and so they don't really provide services at the level that we need them with youth in our higher population.
Any questions? I just have one.
Mm-hmm.
So the medical services are, they do not include mental health?
You are correct.
Okay.
You are correct. With our mental health services, which we have approximately 80 hours on-site, most of them are reimbursed through the region. The county in the line item pays for one FTE to do case management, but the other hours that are served are reimbursed through the region directly to Child Guidance.
Thank you for explaining that. Okay.
And Blue Valley, right, that also operates?
Oh, thank you for catching that.
Mental health services in the evenings and weekends?
Very good. Yes, we do use Blue Valley after-hours, and that is in our line item that's approximately $9,000. Weekends and overnight and, yes, thank you.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Correct Care Solutions.
And I wanted to note that corrected amount of $1,055,549.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Correct Care Solutions with the amended reduction. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four, consent items. Contract with Kohl's Pharmacy and Home Care to provide annual pharmacy services for general assistance clients. The term of the contract is one year from the date of execution with the option for five additional one-year renewals. The cost of county is not to exceed $300,000 for all contracts. Amendments to the following contracts. C-18-108 with MMC contractors for Lancaster County Engineering RTU replacement. The amendment extends the contract for additional two months from May 1, 2018 through June 30, 2018. The cost of county will not increase. C-15-219 with DeAngelo Brothers for noxious weed control spraying and mowing services for the City of Lincoln landfills. The amendment renews the contract from May 19, 2018 through May 18, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $4,000. C-16-30 with Ash Fire and Safety Company for fire extinguisher inspection, testing, and maintenance. The amendment assigns Ash Fire and Safety Company's responsibilities under the contract to Great Plains Fire and Safety. C-15-520 with Vigilant America LLC for electronic equipment and monitoring services using Johnson County KS RFP 2014-118. The amendment renews the contract from April 1, 2018 through March 31, 2019. The estimated cost of county is not to exceed $20,500. C-17-374 with Kohl's Pharmacy and Home Care for the annual supply and administration of influenza vaccine. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning May 30, 2018 through May 29, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $11,800. C-15-201 with Capital City Transfer Services, Inc., for the annual services of transporting dead bodies. The amendment renews the contract for an additional three-year term beginning May 5, 2018 through May 4, 2021. The cost of county is not to exceed $195,000. Right-of-way contract with Camp Creek Antique Machinery Association North 176th Street and Bleff Road in amount of $815. Receive and place on file the County Sheriff's quarterly report for January through March 2018.
Okay, Mr. Walla, I think you have a...
I have two items. One, I just want to, on the Kohl's contract for pharmacy services that's listed there, it also indicates that we have two other vendors, and we are continuing to work with them to try and get their insurance and their documentation in order for them to be providers, which will be part of, we'll bring them up as soon as they show up, but the current contract expired yesterday, I believe, so we needed to get one company in right away. So the contracts for Genoa and Hy-Vee will be processed through you as soon as they get their information to us. The other thing is, is I'm asking for a hold on the, I think it's the first item with MMC, which is an extension of the contract for the RTU replacement at the County Engineers' Office for at least one week.
Okay, and then I also have one that I'd like to pull out. Item number C, or, excuse me, B.C., the Camp Creek. And I'll discuss that after we approve the consent items. So I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent items, withdrawing items B, one, and C. Move approval.
Okay, that was a second.
I mean, second, yeah.
I just have a question for Bob. Does the engineer know that you are delaying this contract on the consent agenda?
I talked to Ron just before I came over here, and there's a meeting set up with the company, I believe, on Thursday or Friday, and there just needs to be some more specifics as to the completion date rather than just 60 days.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve consent items with removing items B, one, and C. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and with regards to item C, the right-of-way contract, there's an individual in the audience who had asked some questions about the timeframe in which this project or this work would be completed, and I, the county engineer is not here, but I did speak with her about this item. Given the nature of the work that needs to be done, there's, she does not know when the work will actually start, and that was the question. She was able to confirm that once work starts, it will be, it will take no more than 45 days. But, and their concern is involves whether or not the work can be done around harvest. And so unfortunately, the county engineer cannot guarantee that it would be done by harvest, but that, again, there are factors, including the condition of the field, that will determine the timeframe in which the work will be completed. But it is important that we do move forward with this today because the bids go out tomorrow. And so the sooner the work can get started, the sooner it will get completed. I don't know, Ms. Brown, does that answer your questions? Okay. I entertain a motion.
Move approval of item 3C. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4C.
4C, yeah.
Sorry. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Okay, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a item not on the agenda? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please continue with the announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings, on Thursday, April 19, 2018 at 8:30 a.m. in the Vail Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next Swayler meeting on Tuesday, April 24, 2018 at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold department budget hearings on Tuesday, April 24, 2018 at 10 a.m. immediately following Lancaster County Board of Commissioners's regular meeting in the Vail Oxford Studio of the County City Building. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the County Board meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and start the Lancaster County Board of Equalization agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meetings is available from the County Clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda item one or minutes, approve the minutes to the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, April 10, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Equalization meeting. Any discussion? More corrections? Okay, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are public hearings.
Okay.
Do you want me just to read all the public hearings?
Well, I'm just doing one at a time.
Okay.
First public hearing is proposed change in exemption status for developmental services in Nebraska, Inc., Lincoln Medical Education Partnership, St. Michael Church of Chaney, and Unity Lincoln.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the proposed change in exemption status.
Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register of Deeds.
I'm gonna go ahead and swear. Do you solemnly swear from that testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. These, item A, these are five properties that have sold, so the permissive exemption was granted previously. Ownership has changed. We remove the exemption upon the sale. I will note that three of the five properties you'll see later on in the list of approval that where they've sold to another nonprofit, and so two of them went to private, those will be taxable. Three of them went to other nonprofits that have applied for exemption as well.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Mr. Gaines? Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in support of these applications, or, I'm sorry, these proposed changes? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on the proposed change in exemption status. Mr. Clerk, would you please see the correlating item?
Next is 3B. This is a 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the 2018 451 tax exemption on rural and personal property. Anyone, Mr. Gaines?
Obviously, these are ones our office has reviewed and recommending approval for exemption.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify in support or in opposition or in the neutral capacity on these items? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on the 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property.
Next is 3C. This is 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval with a late filing penalty.
Again, our office is recommending approval of the exemption. This is the children's zoo, they had multiple parcels, and one of the parcels, they just did not get the renewal application in in time. We made several contacts with them, and then we got a letter explaining that the reasons for them being late. I will note that we did combine all of the zoo parcels into one single parcel, so they won't have as many dangling parcels out there to deal with in the future. But this will result in a penalty of $100 for the late filing on the one parcel.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify in support of the 2018 451 tax exemptions with a late filing penalty? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this item, or, I'm sorry, close the public hearing.
Next is 3D. This is 2018 451 partial tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval.
Again, recommending partial approval on these. The first one, the Bryan Medical Center, is the new surgical center over there near Bryan East. There, the portions that are leased to for-profit entities would be taxable. Portions used by Bryan would be exempt. I believe it results in about a 41% exemption on that new building. And the other one is what used to be the Clark Jerry property, now owned by Emmanuel Retirement, and this is for the personal property to reflect the same percentage of exemption that we do with the real estate. Essentially, the assisted living and the nursing home are exempt. The independent living unit, independent living units are taxable.
Again, thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions for Mr. Gaines? Okay, anyone else here wishing to testify in support of the 2018, the 451 partial tax exemptions? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition or the neutral capacity? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for the partial tax exemptions.
Next is 3E. This is 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for denial.
Two denials, they're both the same situation. These are properties that were acquired for future use. At this point in time, they're vacant ground with no exempt activity, no building permits, anything moving forward to, towards an exempt use, so recommending denial of the applications on those two.
Okay.
And I would make a note on the, there was an error on the original form submitted to the clerk's office. There was a, the Bryan Physician Network one was indicated for approval. It was never our intention to approve this application. It was simply a miscommunication there. So recommend denial on both of these.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any questions? Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in support of the 451 tax exemptions that have been recommended for denial? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition or neutral capacity? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on the 2018 451 tax exemptions that are recommended for denial.
Next is 3F. This is motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Connecting Point Church of the Nazarene, First Baptist Church, Lincoln, Lincoln Literacy Council, Lincoln Medical Education Partnership, and St. Monica's Home.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify in support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity on this item? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the motor vehicle tax exemption applications public hearing.
Next is number four, action items. 4A is notices of proposed change and exemption.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notices of proposed change and exemption. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4B is the 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2018 451 tax exemption, tax exemptions on real and personal property that have been recommended for approval. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4C is 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval with a late filing penalty.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property that have been recommended for approval with a late filing penalty. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a 2018 451 partial exemptions on real and personal property recommended for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2018 451 partial tax exemptions that have been recommended for approval. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is 2018 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property recommended for denial.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2018 451 tax exemption, tax exemptions that have been recommended for denial. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4F are motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Okay, anyone in the audience here like to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Move we adjourn? Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that adjourns the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. Have a good week.
Good job on all those public hearings, flipping back and forth.